Okay, great.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, we're live. This is a work session for town councils in Snowmass Village. It is January, January something. Well, just a minute, we're not on. I was not on. This is January the ninth.
Eight.
Eight, yes, all day too. I had my eyes examined today and they put all this dilation junk in it so I can't read much of anything. Ken, you look very clear though. My long distance has come back. So with that, Rhonda, you've noted who is here, correct?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Clint?
We should probably go around the room.
Yeah, we probably ought to. You know, Ken, I apologize. I'm not very gracious as a hostess. I just assume you know who all of us are. So I'm Markey, I'm the mayor here.
Bob Serkis?
Oh. Alyssa Shane, council member.
Ken and I, Ken, Clint Kenny. Nice to meet you, Ken.
I'm John Dresser, I'm the town attorney.
And I am Travis Elliott.
Thank you all.
And Doug is fixing my computer.
And we are missing a couple of council members, but yeah, we can go ahead and get started. Real briefly, just virtually introduce you to Ken Feldman. He is the attorney that the city of Aspen, ourselves, Picken County, and the town of Passault have hired to negotiate the new Comcast agreement on our behalf. He's done an awesome job. We're almost ready to bring that to you for adoption. However, we just thought we would do this work session ahead of that date, probably a meeting in February, to answer any questions that you might have. And Ken is going to give you a brief overview of what a franchise agreement does and what has changed since the previous version. So Ken, with that, if you want to take it away, appreciate it.
Hey, thanks Travis. Thanks everybody for having me. I hope you've gotten a little bit of snow in the last couple of days.
Eight inches. And if it's marketing, it's more like two feet, but.
All right. It's still sixty, Denver, so we're hurting down here. Okay. We're talking about the cable franchise today and, you know, we have, we have some areas where local governments are used to working where you've got some municipal authority and some state authority. And it's a rare occasion where the state is not a player, but it's sort of a shared authority between local government and the federal government. But if you think of cable as essentially a local power to require franchises of cable companies that use public rights of way, there's a federal box in which you can act and you can't go outside of that box. There are a number of states, probably about twenty, that have taken franchising of cable away from their municipalities and counties, but that is not the case here. So we continue to have the ability to require a franchise of a cable operator for the use of public rights of way. What the state has taken away from municipalities and counties is the right to franchise the use of the right of way for other kinds of telecommunications providers. That was done back in nineteen ninety-six before we were not even using the word broadband. And as a result, we have this strange situation where there's a wire in your streets in Snowmass Village that is owned by Comcast and it is used to deliver internet service and voice service and video service. And the town is only authorized to require a franchise and to charge franchise fees based on the cable part of that. So as elected officials, if you hear complaints ever from your citizens about their provider, you may hear complaints about the internet or the phone service and you have absolutely no control over that part of the regulatory process. So keep in mind the cable franchise is just the video piece. As Travis noted, we've pooled resources with the local governments within the county. It made sense and it does make sense to do it, especially when you have multiple jurisdictions that do PEG programming, government and public and educational access programming on the cable system and share resources like you all do with Grassroots TV in Picken County. So we had a lot of shared interest. So every one of these franchises that are going to be adopted in the next couple of months will be essentially the same with a couple of differences that might be town-specific or in the county's case, county-specific. So with that, I would let you know that as you saw my memo, I highlighted some of the key issues that we've addressed in this franchise that weren't play or we didn't have, we didn't do it as good as we could have the last time we had a franchise. And the first is the definition of gross revenues. We are entitled under federal law to charge up to five percent of the cable gross revenues for a franchise fee. That is in essence rent for the use of public rights of way. In the past, a lot of local governments had very narrow definitions because they were drafted by the cable company for what gross revenues were. And we have, this started, this franchise forum that we're using grew out of negotiations a number of years ago, about three or four years ago in Denver and Aurora, and then were adopted by a statewide organization, the Colorado Communication and Utility Alliance, turned into a model agreement. And in that earlier process, they used a financial consultant who was familiar with cable accounting. And we basically improved the definition of gross revenues. So when we talk about getting rent from the cable company equal to five percent of their gross revenues for their use of the rights of way, it's now five percent of a slightly larger pie than it used to be under the old definitions of gross revenues. Related to that, because it's financial, is we have new language that significantly helps any city that wants to audit, I should say, any local government that wants to audit the financial obligations of the cable company. If you are a cable subscriber or you've seen cable bills, you know that a lot of people package the different services. So you get a bundled price for internet service and video service or internet, video and voice service. The cable company has to internally allocate a piece of that bundle to the video product, and that's what you get the five percent of. When you do an audit, if you do an audit, we need to see the records that Comcast keeps to be able to determine how they allocate that bundle. And in the past, in other jurisdictions, they have been found to have been not allocating it fairly, resulting in more money owed to the local government. And in other cases, there are a number of cases in other states where they didn't have the records that they needed to have to be able to tell definitively whether they were doing it right or not. It looked like they were doing it wrong, but the records weren't there. So we have language that describes what kind of records they must maintain to allow the town to do an audit if you would want to do one at some point in the future. And it may be this just as a side, that at some point in the next few years, you may want to again share the cost with the other jurisdictions in the county and do an audit of all the cable franchise entities in the county. It is something that we recommend every five or ten years a community ought to do just to make sure that you're actually getting the money that you're entitled to. So those are the two big financial changes in this franchise compared to the old franchise. I put in, the next issue is called competitive equity, and I tried to describe that in some detail. It's sort of like a level playing field provision, but it's different to comply with some FCC regulations. And suffice it to say, when Aurora and Denver did their negotiations, and I was involved in that, it took eighteen months to negotiate that franchise. Twelve of those eighteen months were taken up on three issues, and the definition of competitive equity was one of them. So now that we have that issue resolved or was resolved a few years ago on that franchise, everybody else in Colorado that is a Comcast community got to take advantage of that twelve months of brain damage that Aurora and Denver put into coming up with a new definition of competitive equity. I don't know that this is ever going to be an issue in the more rural parts of our state or other states because the likelihood of another cable company coming in and wanting to compete with Comcast, not the top providers, the Hulus and the Netflix, but actually building a competitive network in the ground next to Comcast, I think it's unlikely. But I have seen in the last couple of years, there are some companies that don't look like a traditional cable company and they don't own a lot of infrastructure, but there are other parts of their operations where they do look like a cable company. And without getting into the weeds on those kind of things, technology is changing really fast and we may at some point have a new company that's providing some video programming over the internet and Comcast may come back and say, "They're just like a cable company and we should be treated the same way and they don't have to get a franchise, so we shouldn't have to do ours anymore." We have language in competitive equity, assuming we get this last issue resolved, which is one of the two outstanding issues, that will protect the town. So I feel very comfortable about that. When I get through going through all of these issues, I'll give you an update that I got this morning from Comcast on where we are on these outstanding issues. One of the biggest issues that this negotiation dealt with was the PEG channels. We have high definition now that we never had at the time of the last cable franchise. Cable companies hate giving local governments high-definition channels. And the reason they hate doing that is because they take up a lot more bandwidth on the network than standard-definition channels, about six times more. They, if they're not giving that bandwidth to us, and of course, we don't pay for it, it's one of the benefits of the franchise, they can monetize that in other ways. They can lease it for channel space to other programmers, they can use it on their internet side and use it for different kinds of internet services or faster speeds. So they really don't like doing HD channels for local governments. But again, since Denver and Aurora got an HD channel a few years ago, they've been a little bit more open to doing it. And I was pleasantly surprised, let me put it that way, that they are willing to give the communities that share the channels in the county two high-definition channels. We start with one so that the government programming will be on a high-definition channel. And depending upon the kind of grant that they give us, which is the other issue that's still open, either after the first year or after the second year of the franchise, we'll have a second high-definition channel for grassroots. So that was a positive part of this negotiation. The next part of the memo talks about this grant and it's related to video on-demand. Again, if you're with a cable or satellite subscriber, you know you can go to the on-demand menu and watch whatever programming the various programmers have on there. They don't, cable companies do not like giving space on their high demand, on-demand menu to governments, in part because it takes up, again, space on their servers. But Comcast claims that because of their technology, everybody would have to be on the same spot. So you'd go to a government on-demand and you could watch Denver or Snowmass or Val or whoever Comcast was providing service for, and they don't want to do that. So in lieu of that, they came up with this idea to help communities try to get more of their programming online, which I personally think is a better way to go, because if you have a high-speed broadband connection and you have good accessible programming online, I can watch Snowmass Village programming whether or not I'm a Comcast subscriber and regardless of what part of the world I'm in, as long as I have a good connection. Part of that incentive to help local governments in that part of the franchise was Comcast offering a grant to help pay for the server that will be necessary to store and upload that programming. They offered us a ten thousand dollar grant. We're trying to get a twenty thousand dollar grant. And all of the staff involved in the negotiations agreed that if we can get twenty grand instead of ten, we'll wait two years to get that second HD channel instead of one year. So we're waiting to hear back from Comcast there. PEG fees are another issue and that's, I think that's a new issue for you, right? Snowmass does not impose a PEG fee now?
Correct.
Okay. So two of the communities, I think it's Aspen and the county, have been imposing a PEG fee. In addition to franchise fees, you're entitled to charge a fee to be negotiated by the parties to raise money that will help in capital expenditures for public education and government access programming. The staff part of these discussions, everybody agreed that let's see if we can get all of the jurisdictions in the county to impose the same PEG fee because while it can be used solely by Snowmass Village, if you want to upgrade your microphones or upgrade your cameras, some of it can be used with, on the joint programming that everybody in the county does. And it seemed more equitable if everybody was imposing the same fee. Fifty cents is kind of standard in probably all Comcast jurisdictions that have a PEG fee in Colorado, but three that I know of, it's fifty cents per subscriber per month. The one thing that you should know, however, is that under federal law, cable companies, they don't have the, they're not mandated to do this, but they have the right to pass on any government imposed fees as a line item on the bill. So if you have a cable bill and you look at it, you'll see the franchise fee is on there. You'll see an FCC fee is on there. You'll see nine-one-one. All those fees are itemized on your bill. They will start imposing the PEG fee or rather putting a line item to the PEG fee on the bill, assuming that you decide to go forward with that.
Is the PEG fee variable?
I'm sorry, was the last?
Well, looking at this PEG fee, fifty cents per subscriber per month. Just a quick question. Who determines increases in the PEG fee? The town or Comcast?
Well, no one, actually. We're stuck on fifty cents per subscriber per month. And there's a provision in the franchise, let me pull it up here, where the parties can meet and talk about increased needs and the ability to raise, or Comcast thinks it's appropriate to lower the PEG fee at any time during the franchise term, but there's no obligation that the parties are going to reach agreement on that. So we are basically saying, let's expect fifty cents per subscriber per month, regardless of what's likely to happen. If you are looking at the franchise draft, it's section nine point five. After it has the fifty cent fee, it talks about, the parties can ask each other to meet no more than three times during the term of the franchise to discuss costs and prior expenditures and future capital needs. And based on those discussions, hopefully come to an agreement on modifications. But again, there's no hammer, if you will, that if we think we've got to get an increase in the fee, that we can force Comcast to do it.
Thank you.
Let me just, just to reiterate what Ken was saying, we don't have that fee right now. So that would be a new fifty cent charge going forth.
Is there any, the biggest complaint I hear is not only, it's only Comcast, you know, it's, they have the entire marketplace, but second of which is the ongoing increase every year in what it costs. I think this year went up nine, nine percent? Bob, do you know?
No, I don't.
Was it nine or fifteen percent again?
I don't, I don't know, Markey. I didn't, I guess I haven't.
You haven't seen any new bill?
Well, I haven't seen my bill or I haven't actually figured it, you know, looked at what the additional increase was.
It is becoming pretty significant.
Yeah.
I haven't looked at it either. Ben gets it. Oh.
If you have a question, I mean, Ken can answer it. Can we control that?
Okay, can you talk about, people who are on fixed incomes do complain about the ongoing increases with Comcast, anywhere from high single-digit or double digits, and continuing to limit the channels that you can select. Do you hear that complaint and how do you deal with that, Ken?
Yeah, all the time. One of my colleagues told me not too long ago, the only thing in life that's definite are death, taxes, and Comcast bill is going up in January. They do go up and they found some creative, and I think in some cases, underhanded ways to make them go up. They, it's a fair statement to say that their programming costs are going up pretty quickly and this is, the curve has been going like this for a long time. And the broadcast entities, NBC, CBS, Fox, ABC, they get to charge cable companies to retransmit their programming. Those are the kind of costs that they can put into your underlying bill, but they've started to line itemize those. So they have a broadcast fee now on the bill. And they have a sports channel fee because the most expensive program to pay for to put on a cable system is ESPN. So they are getting squeezed. At the same time, this is big business and they know, they are not going to raise their rates anymore than they think will benefit them without a large chunk of their customers dropping their service. And just as an example, and I can mention this because it's already been done, so it's not privileged anymore. Colorado Springs is one of the few cities that didn't have a franchise fee, and that stemmed from their long history of being a very, very conservative Doug Bruce community. And they had this very small per subscriber, or they had no franchise fee, but they had a per subscriber fee of about a buck eighteen, whereas a five percent franchise fee would have been bringing up in about four dollars based on the average subscriber. And they just, in their last franchise, which was approved last year, they decided they wanted to go to five percent. And they have the right under federal law to go to five percent. And like you mentioned, Comcast is raising rates sometimes twice a year. It's not just once a year anymore. And sometimes six, seven, eight bucks at a time. And when Colorado Springs said, "We want to go to five percent," Comcast initially said no. And they really had no authority to say no. And when we asked them why they were so, so much against that, they said, "Well, because we're going to be doing an increase in this month. And then six months from now, we're going to be doing another increase. And if we just bump your franchise fee up to five percent in between those two, people are going to see three big increases and we're going to lose a lot of customers." And of course, if you say to them, "Well, why don't you guys just not raise rates for a while and let us do what we're legally entitled to do?" That didn't work for them. And what the Springs ended up doing was agreeing that they would go to three and a half percent for the first year and then four and a half percent and then five percent. But it just was indicative of this issue. So they are going to continue. So, they are going to continue to raise rates, people are going to continue to complain about them, and, and, and I just know that they're not going to raise them as, so much as to cause them to lose a lot of customers. Uh, the other thing I would say, and, and this is, I, I, again, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but tech, this technology is changing, and, and I would make an educated guess and say, "This is the last cable franchise Snowmass Village will ever do," and that's not something I would just say to you, I'd say that to all my clients who are doing franchises now. Everything is starting to move towards, have you heard the phrase, "over the top"?
Yep.
Right, so we, if you can get your video programming through Hulu or Netflix or Slingbox or NBC.com or whatever it might be, people for years, the other big complaint other than the fees, has been, "How come I can't just pay for the channels I want to watch?" And we are moving in that direction right now, and the thing that, in my opinion, has been holding that up is the, uh, sports programming and the content providers who own multiple sports channels, who basically say, "If you want to buy these channels from us, you have to buy all these other channels from us." That is starting to break down. And when the sports part of this breaks down, and you can order individual sporting events that you want, I think whole cable model implodes. So it might be five years, it might be eight or 10 years, and maybe I'm even too long, it might be three years, but I, I don't think we're going to be dealing with this. And, and that's important to you for another reason, because whatever the amount of money is you get in franchise fees, which goes into the general fund, you don't have to earmark it for anything cable-related, that money is going away at some point in the next 10 years. And, under our existing state law, unless state law changes, there's not an easy way to replace that revenue. So, um, I hear, I hear their pain. Uh, I'm a subscriber too, so I see it on my personal bill. There's, there's really not that much we can do about it.
Ken?
Um, on a slightly different subject, um, we lost the a- access to the, um, Grand Junction, um, CBS affiliate, uh, sometime in 2017. And that affiliate, basically, you know, was a Western Slope News, which applied more directly to this Peking County than do the Denver affiliates. Is there any way within this con, within this negotiation of a franchise fee to get that back?
Um, so, the answer is unfortunately not. I'm, I'm a little bit familiar with this issue, because I, I will tell you in a second where I dealt with it before, but the issue of which affiliate has broadcast rights in which geographic area is a function of a completely separate federal law and completely separate FCC regulations, and, um, and, and it relates to a specific assigned direct market area. Um, the only way to get that changed would be, and you can certainly reach out to the Grand Junction affiliate and ask them how you can help, but you've got to go through the, our congressional delegation to try to get that done. And, um, there's a couple of counties around the country that are on state borders that they, we refer to as Orkney Counties, and La Plata County is one of them. Um, for some reason, Montezuma is not, but La Plata is, and for years, uh, Durango and, and the other communities in La Plata County, their home channel for their affiliates were, were the Albuquerque stations. And, um, the home football team for Albuquerque is not the Denver Broncos, it's the Dallas Cowboys. And, uh, people were not happy in Durango when they had to watch the Cowboys and not the Broncos, and that was just one of a number of issues of concern that they had. But they had to work through, um, uh, Michael Bennett's office and, um, and going back all the, I, I, I can't see any of you real close to this, I don't know how old anybody is, but going back to when Tim Work was in the United States Senate, they were fighting this issue in La Plata County. So, uh, that's a completely separate legal issue, and unfortunately, we've got to get some law change in Washington to be able to give a Grand Junction channel the right to have presidents over the Denver channel.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions about the peg fee before I move on?
No.
Okay, the, um, the other main issue that I mentioned in the memo was the complimentary cable service. We've been getting that, uh, free cable in public buildings, uh, for a while. The law, the FCC law changed on that to, uh, say the value of that could be deducted from franchise fees, but then that decision got overturned, uh, so we kind of made some modifications in the franchise to say, "They're going to give it to us, but if the law changes, they have the right to, you know, enforce whatever the law says at the time." Um, I, I don't think we need to get into that in great detail, other than to say, "We're going to continue to get our free cable service in the area that we get it." The, the other issue I wanted to mention to you, um, that I didn't mention yet is the, uh, customer service standards. Uh, customer service standards is the one, there are federal customer service standards, and in your current franchise, it says that, uh, they will, Comcast will abide by the federal standards. The federal standards have not been updated since 1993. Um, they still have provisions in them about, um, you're not allowed to get a busy signal a certain period of time. Um, so, nothing about, certainly, and nothing about the technology of automatic voice response and how long somebody can wait on hold before they can get to a live person. Um, it's the, one of the only areas in this whole federal and, and local relationship where we as local governments have the authority to adopt more stringent standards than the federal standards. Um, again, through the CCUA group throughout Colorado, um, they negotiated model customer service standards with Comcast and other cable companies, and, uh, these are pretty good. They're not perfect, but they, I, I think they're a lot better than the federal standards. So my recommendation to all of your staffs, uh, involved in these negotiations was that we use that CCUA model and adopt those customer service standards, and it provides more consumer protections and greater flexibility for the town to enforce, um, uh, violations of those standards if, if Comcast would violate them, whether they be how long somebody had to wait for an appointment, or somebody not showing up for an appointment, or not being able to return equipment, or, uh, disability access to, uh, equipment, those kinds of things. Protection of consumer privacy, all of those things are covered in these customer service standards and not covered in the current federal standard. So, um, with that, I'll, I'll shut up and see what other questions that you have.
I don't have any.
Okay then, well then, let me update you on the two house.
We got one more coming, Ken.
Hang on one second.
Okay.
I had a, I had a question. There is a... There's a, there was a section on video programming in the, in, I guess in the proposed contract, which, um, frankly, I didn't understand, and just wondered if either...
What page are you on?
Is this in 2.6? That highlighted thing?
I have 12 of 63, but then I couldn't find...
17. It says, "A multi-channel video programming provider owns, utilizes, or manages no more than de minimis facilities." Is that what it was? Page 17. Paragraph A, 2.6A, towards the bottom.
It's in the competitive equity section.
If that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think it was in the competitive equity section.
Do you see it?
I'm trying to find it. I don't know why I didn't...
Are, are you, you're on section 2.6A?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, that's in the competitive equity.
The last sentence.
Yeah, oh, the la, that's right, the last sentence, uh, or the last, I don't know, few sentences, there's a highlighted sentence in there about multi-channel video programming.
Right. So, if, uh, if you look at, all right, so think about it this way. Multi-channel video programming is a federally defined term, and it's basically a company that packages multiple channels of video programming. So it could be a cable company, but it could also be Netflix. What makes it a cable service and therefore subject to the Cable Act is that the company not only sells multi-channel video programming, but they deliver it over a network that they own or control that uses the rights of way in a local jurisdiction. So, this whole section of competitive equity is intended to say, if we give a, a franchise or we give permission to another company, uh, the way it was originally written, it was to another company to provide multi-channel video programming, then Comcast, if they think that company got a better deal, they should get the deal. Well, if you're Hulu or Netflix, you don't need to use the rights of way. So one of the things we've changed in this agreement is at the beginning of paragraph A, you will see it says, "If we provide a similar authorization to utilize the rights of way in order to provide cable services or similar programming." Um, that last sentence at the end, um, and, and I'm not sure whether it's going to end up staying in the agreement or whether it's going to come out of the agreement, but it, um, it basically, the first part of it, if it were to go back in, it basically says, "We're not talking about satellite companies." So video programming service that are delivered over satellite networks are not, um, do not trigger this competitive equity provision. But then we also add, uh, not satellite service, "For, were a multi-channel video programming provider," so one of these companies that packages programming, "owns, utilizes, or manages no more than de minimis facilities in the rights of way." So that's the case where if you have one of these companies that was basically an over-the-top company, this is why I talked before about the technology is changing so fast, that we're just trying to anticipate all different kinds of examples. If you have a company that comes in and they don't, they don't use wires that they own or control in the street, they're leasing space, or they're sending their signal over other, uh, over the, the commercial internet, but let's say they build some 600-foot connection point, uh, uh, from fiber optics to a head-end facility or a central office that they have in Snowmass Village. So they don't own wires running all up and down your streets, but they've got one little piece where they do own physical infrastructure. The point of that language is to say, "That's not a cable company, and that kind of use does not trigger this competitive equity requirement, because you wouldn't be able to require a cable franchise of that company." And if it did trigger this section, then Comcast would say, "Oh, you didn't give them a franchise, we don't have to have a franchise anymore either."
Got it, okay, thank you. I think I got it.
Okay, so, and, that actually ties into the two issues, at least the first of the two issues that are still outstanding. Initially Comcast had said to me they were going to get back to me, uh, by January 3rd. I, they didn't, I spoke to their contact this morning, and he told me that on Wednesday they're having, they're caucusing, all of their big leagues who are working on this are caucusing. And, and the, the feedback I got, that this language in, uh, 2.6A, and also the issue of, "Are they going to give us a $20,000 grant?", um, he said, "I think we're really close, and I think we're going to get there, but I can't give you the specifics until we meet on Wednesday." The reason that we're even talking about this without having a final deal done for you today is, the, the other three communities in the county are all going to go to study session on this, I think on the 23rd. So everybody wants to be prepared to adopt this, hopefully in February. Um, but given your calendar this month, we had to do it today if we were going to do it in January. Um, so, I'm hopeful that when we get to the three other jurisdictions, we're actually going to have a final agreement, uh, before we have our study sessions there, uh, but we didn't quite get there, um, uh, with you, and that's why these are still open issues. Um, so I'll be in touch with Travis on Wednesday, and I'm, I'm very, I'm cautiously optimistic we're going to get this thing polished off, and, and we'll put a memo together to let you know how that got resolved.
Good. What other questions?
Um, okay, well, I mean, I got...
It's one long agreement.
Yeah, it is. I, I got a few questions. On, all right, on page 21 of the 63, um, I'll give you the section in a minute. Um, 4.8, performance evaluation. Uh, section A, there seems like there's a word missing. Um, it might be grantee, although I'm not sure, but it says, "This may hold performance evaluation."
But that, you got it, it should say the town may hold.
Okay. So that was, that's just one of those things. Um, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get there. Okay. Um, the, um, the, the commercial liability limits, which were on page, well, that you, you could prob, I'm, I'm sure you know where they are.
27 of 80.
They just...
27 of 80.
26, 27 of, yeah. Uh, they just seem low. I mean, million-dollar commercial liability in, you know, limit for a company the size of Comcast, or even Comcast, Colorado, seems kind of small. I mean, is that, is that important? I mean, it's important to have commercial liability, but the level is, I don't know, seems small, but I, of course, I have no idea what the claims have been.
Uh, you're, well, you're right, that it, it seems small. I, I will tell you that, um, because this is not, you know, the level of coverage is not something I'm, um, able to opine on, so whenever I get to the insurance section of a cable franchise, my advice to staff is, and was in this case, check with your risk managers, or check with SIRS, or check with whoever your insurance company is, and see if they're okay with this. And so the feedback I got was, "We're okay with it."
Okay. Okay. Um, okay, one more thing, I think.
Who's checking with SIRS?
We, we, I'm sure we have, and we continue, I mean, the million bucks is pretty normal for us.
Yeah, it's pretty low. I have to carry three million, I'm talking about.
Okay. Section 9.4, um, which is page 34 of 63. Um, well, 35, uh, 30, 35 of 63, but section 9.4, is that a, is that a new section that, for this, for this agreement? The web-based, web-based video on demand and streaming?
The on-demand programming on the cable lineup. Uh, this is new, and this was not many earlier franchises.
Okay, okay, that's what it seemed like, but...
So, this is just a procedural question. With this grant, this reference is 10,000, the other, uh, earlier was 20,000, does that money go into Peking County? For government?
I think what would hap, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I was really trying to figure out the nuances of, you've got different jurisdictions involved with that grant.
I, I, what would happen regardless of whatever amount we land on? Uh, I think the intent of staff is, um, we're going to get together with grassroots, we're going to get the staffs of, uh, all the communities that are, uh, sharing these resources and figure out how can we best maximize the use of that money so that it will benefit the programming that's done throughout the county. Um, and, and I think by getting a, a server that can be dedicated, um, just to, uh, this video on-demand programming, um, every jurisdiction, whether it's just the town's government program, or whether it's the community-wide programming, the grassroots, uh, to be able to have a, a website where you can get Snowmass Village television, or grassroots television, or Aspen television, um, all of that programming can be stored on one server. So my guess is, it's most likely that that money is going to be used to buy a server or upgrade existing equipment to make it easier to get everybody's programming on the web.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, um, section 9.9, um, towards, uh, like the bottom third of that, there's a sentence that starts, "The town shall also be responsible at its own expense," um, and the ta, the, yeah, "for damage caused by gross negligence, et cetera." And then the next sentence says, "The, the grantee shall be responsible at its own expense to replace any of the grantee's equipment." Should that be the town's equipment? In other words, is this reciprocal? If one party is, is negligent and the other party's, um, equipment is damaged, then the negligent party pays for the damage?
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading the whole paragraph here. Yeah, I'm reading the whole paragraph here before I respond.
Yeah, no, take your time.
You know what? I think it might be, but I need to go back to some earlier drafts. I know that, and I need to look at this in the context of some of the other sections, because we define where the demarcation point is, and everything on Comcast's side of the demarcation point is their equipment, and everything on our side of it is our equipment. I don't know how much of our equipment is going to be close to their equipment where they're going to be working, but I think you're probably right, and that this is a mistake, and it should say they're responsible to replace any of our equipment that they damaged through their negligent or intentional acts. So, thanks for catching that, and we will, we'll circle back with you on that.
Okay. And then, one, just one question. On the service agreement, there's something in there, in the section on, I guess on payment, let me, I'll find it. I'll give it to you in a minute. Section 6B, the billing section, something called a soft disconnect. I'm just curious as what a soft disconnect is, if you know.
So, if I'm remembering it correctly, the way they've described that in the past, and it's been a while since we talked about it, is that they would shut off service, but they would not, at that point, take back the equipment that is in your home or business that makes the service work. So, they, so it's sort of the first, or the next step after you don't pay your bill after a certain amount of time, and, and an attempt to collect. They shut you off, but they're not going to come in and pull out wires or change out any equipment at that time, and that happens, you know, later, if it's still not paid.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions? Next steps?
We'll bring it back to you in February after Picking County and City of Aspen and Basalt look at it, and you'll see it on your consent agenda, or agenda going forward, assuming you're all comfortable with the provisions. We'll take it forward.
It'll be interesting to know the outcome of those little tricky, the three major issues.
Yeah.
After you talk with them on, I guess, Wednesday, or whenever, the work session.
We can probably just update you on that through Clint's weekly info update.
That'd be great.
If that's okay?
Okay.
That'd be fine.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks for having me. We'll be in touch.
Sounds good.
Yep.
One, but one question, I don't think it relates to Ken, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of reporting that comes back to the town, a lot of reports. Who, who's the town, who in the town is responding, town staff responsible for getting these reports and reviewing them, et cetera?
No, it has been as of late. Honestly, we've done it on a complete kind of basis, and so there hasn't been a whole lot, and so we haven't really been active in it. I would assume it'd come into the manager's office, and they'd delegate from there.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Do we get many, I mean, do we get many complaints about, you know, about the cable coming into the town office?
I can think of one that I've gotten. Another, I used to work in Durango, in Durango, because of that Albuquerque thing that you talked about. We got them continuously, but they're so far in between here that it's, hadn't even hit our radar.
I mean, would we-
Aside from price.
No, no, no. Cost is one thing, but it goes down to what Ken was saying, sports rules the world.
Yeah.
And if we couldn't get the Broncos or-
Oh, my gosh.
-Grand Junction put on the new Las Vegas team.
Yeah, you'd never get anybody-
Exactly.
You wouldn't get anybody to support it.
Our phones would be lit up at that point.
Well, our phones would be lit up.
Right.
And I think the financial reporting goes to the finance department, though, the-
Well, the franchise fees and all that kind of stuff. I thought you were talking about service requirements.
Yeah, well, somebody audits that, I presume.
Yes. I mean, and that's the thing, we can go back and audit with them, and, I mean, that's a large audit, and as Ken's recommendation was, that would be a multi-organization working together to do that.
I mean, is it, is it, is it worth, is it worth talking to the Grand Junction station to find out if in fact they do, you know, cover, if they do broadcast Broncos, or-
They do the Broncos.
Yeah.
That's-
Okay.
It's, it's no, it's a duplication. It's not, you get the Grand Junction news, you get the, you know-
Yeah, I know. No, I mean, it's a much more, I found it to be a much more useful station than, than the Denver station. But, you know, I'm, I don't know. I don't know how the community would, would respond to that if we attempted to, attempted to work with Grand Junction to change that.
It's not working with Grand Junction, it's working with Bennett and Gardner and Tipton at that point.
Okay.
And so you'd all have to say, "Is that something we want to put our effort into to make happen?"
Well, I don't know.
I don't think we want to take that one on.
Okay.
I mean, I haven't heard that as a big cry amongst the community.
All right.
Unless Alyssa has. Have you heard?
No, I don't hear about those things. I didn't even really know until Bob said it.
Then it happened.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Since I, I wasn't hearing that-
Please speak into that microphone, Ben.
Are they actually talking about now charging franchise fees for internet service?
No.
No.
That's not going to be in there, and is there a reason why they're not-
Because it's illegal.
Because that is illegal, and they won't do that. Okay.
It's just audio.
Okay. I was just thinking, on the other hand, as being, providing us with, as part of the agreement, our, and our internet circuit-
Free.
What's that?
As free.
As free, which it's not. We pay.
Right.
We've been paying down at the rec center for TV for the past X amount of years to-
Rec centers are specifically excluded.
Okay.
So we'll bring it back to you. I mean, it's a long, I think that, I mean, honestly, in my opinion, the nice part of this is working with our partners in the valley. We all jointly paid for Ken. Ken, I mean, John can attest to this, I'm sure, is the statewide expert on this issue. And so if there is somebody you want doing the negotiation, we've got the right person doing it, and all the staffs have been working together, and I think we're all within 99.9% with each other on this one. So with any luck, it'll be pretty easy for your consideration next month.
The question I have is, do you envision an IGA with the other jurisdictions? So there's going to be a plan that's set up for that grant immediately? This was one of the factors previously, that one of the other jurisdictions wanted something that was not necessarily beneficial to all the jurisdictions, and... So if you don't, that's fine.
I would probably contemplate some type of an agreement, because people change.
For the, you're talking about the grant.
Well, I'm talking, you know-
When I shook my head so quick, I thought you meant an IGA that we'd all execute our individual-
No, no.
Franchise, and that's what I said. No, we're not doing that. They're all individual agreements.
Talking about administration of the grant and how we're going to share equipment and-
We could talk about putting something in writing with them. When we talked about it over the phone last, and it's kind of in the franchise agreement, that money would be spent on the on-demand web access portion of our content, and-
So that server that he referenced that they were going to buy is going to be located in the county building.
Yes, because that's the access point.
And we'll be able to put all of our web on there, and so that 20 is going to go. So that, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure, because it was very different to the last time around.
The only thing I could say about that is we already have that type of system.
Right. We're already do, we're already doing that on Granicus.
And so-
But, this is a different kind of web, on-demand programming, rather than our typical government function program. This would be maybe a safety, this might, this might be a replacement to what I think of was town talk. So in other words, here's how you do your recycling, here's how you do, here's how you don't park in front of your house when the snowplows need to be through, et cetera, et cetera. So it wouldn't be like the governmental functions that's going to stay where we have it now. Is that the way you envision it? I mean, you may not agree with my examples, but town talk.
I don't think it's an or, I think it's an and.
Right.
Yes. Then at that point, it's, it'll be an additional place to find this information.
Right.
Okay.
Although, our archive of meetings won't be on that server. It'll stay where-
The town.
Correct. Right.
We could, I mean, we could easily upload it there as well, whatever that looks like in the future, yeah.
Anything else? Thank you, Doug.
I'll meet you at the barber tomorrow.
Madam Mayor.
Me too.
Yeah.
I would like to tour the Sonnenblick situation before they come up.
No, 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 that's not how it works.
You can't do that?
No.
Nope.
If you're, if you want to have a site visit, you have a site visit as part of the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, you can, you can request staff, pardon?
Where we could, you could drive up there yourself, right?
Well, if you were on trial for murder, and the judge decided to walk up to the scene by himself and decide, how would you feel about that?
So-
That's a horrible example.
No, it's not.
So the place-
Because it, it makes it come home very seriously, because we already had that problem with the planning commission. One of the planning commissioners went up there, drove around, looked around, and said, "Oh, my God." Emailed all the other planning commissioners and said, "You need to go up there."
Oh.
So, I'm, I'm very serious about, if you want to drive by there, don't say, "I went out and drove by there and looked at it, and I think this because of that." They need to have the same opportunity to watch you, view it, and understand.
So if, if I would like to be shown, then I should bring that up when it comes up-
Right.
Yes.
For us.
Well, and you, you can tell staff to schedule it, and staff will say, "There's been a request for a site visit, and there will be a site visit."
Okay.
And what, what I recommend is, you'll see these pictures where somebody's standing there with a story pole, and it may or may not look innocuous, or offensive, or whatever you want to say, but if you have those story poles or balloons flying for the site visit, it's far more informative.
Yes.
And you can, and, and you can discuss it amongst yourselves.
Right.
Rather than relaying things from outside the public hearing into the public hearing, because it's not good when the judges testify. And if you think of yourself as judges, and you say, "Well, I went out and looked at it, and it's, it's not fair to the applicant."
Okay. So, fine, that's-
You're giving me the look.
That's on a, that's on a future, that's on a future agenda.
Yeah, it's coming up.
February, or is it next mo, next?
Next, next June. The 16th.
Sixteenth, right?
Yes, next June.
So, so that can be, we can arrange, we can work that out at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Have, Clint, have you had any contact with grassroots in the last couple of weeks?
With Nexus?
Yeah.
The Nexus proposal?
Yeah.
We met last week and we're meeting Wednesday. So they're, they're preparing their business plan on the 16th, I believe.
Of February?
No, January.
Oh, January.
You've asked for an update, and so we scheduled it whenever the date was, and it'll be the-
I just didn't remember when we had scheduled it.
And so the way we've asked them is they're going to have a PowerPoint, they're going to walk through some concepts, they're going to let you know where they're at. I don't mean very clear to them, this is not like make it or break it, but a good update to the council so everybody can understand what progress is being made, and what they're looking at, and how they're proceeding.
I did have, in the last few days, I actually, I had somebody ask me, in a strange, backhanded way, if there were, if there were, if the music festival was going to be involved. And I said, "Well, you know, I didn't know, you know, that we were getting a group of people together, but there theoretically is going to be a performance, you know, area, and that would be open to, should be open to anybody."
Right. And I don't want to speak for Nexus, but what, I'm pretty confident in telling you, that they're going to say, they're open to any programming, and what they're trying to set up, they're trying to build relationships with the film festival, with anybody they can, to make sure they've got appropriate and adequate programming in the-
Well, I mean, you might pass that on to them in your next conversation.
Well, that person also called me.
Oh, okay.
So I told him to call Clint.
And, and I'm confident, telling you, they want-
I don't get in the middle of-
Maybe it was another person.
They want, they want as much programming as possible, and anybody they can work with, I'm confident in saying they're, they're going to try and make that happen.
We're trying to do a concept on, on the performing, what I understand is like the temporary has down in Basalt.
Yeah, I don't know how big the temporary is. I haven't been there, but, yeah, I mean, they're-
About 200 seats.
Yeah.
This will be, the number I saw the other day was 120-ish, something.
Yeah, I thought it was 120.
124, tentatively, depending on-
So they're, they're working through those numbers. That's the kind of stuff they hope to present next week, is, you know, how would it fit, where would they go, who are they thinking? But the number, the rough number, and you'll see this officially more a week from today, a week from tomorrow, like that 120-ish is what they think they can fit.
But their goal is to build that space that all those entities would be able to, that would want to come here, actually.
Right. And the temporary, from what I understand, is a good example. They, anywhere from a comedy show to a movie to a-
Right.
To a performance.
Okay.
Anything else?
Are we having that meeting on the 29th?
We would like to, if we could, if-
Well, I'm just trying to make sure it's in my calendar.
Four o'clock on the 29th is what we're aiming for, yes, and I think-
So no meeting on the 22nd?
Correct.
And the think tank would be on the 29th, the 30th versus the 29th.
So just what Rhonda just said, is, you're going to get an email in the next, you might even have it in your inbox now, but it'll be coming out this afternoon, we're trying to. It'll be a link to the, to the draft plan. We're aiming for four o'clock on the 29th with the planning commission and the town council. There'll be, what we're aiming for is Sunday night, the 28th, we'll have an open, community open house. It'll be similar to what we did before. That's a Sunday night. It'll be after skiing, come in, see it. We'll have open houses all day on Monday with different stakeholders and groups trying to get input. We'll have a joint meeting with the planning commission and town council on, at four o'clock, and then, you know, whatever kind of more opportunity for public input after that meeting. And then Tuesday, we'd go through it Tuesday morning with more community, and with the think tank on Tuesday, 11:30 or noon. And then, and then, of course, we'll have online and written, and, you know, however else people want to get input, it'll still be there, but that will be the in-person presentation opportunities. That's Sunday night, Monday, and Tuesday morning.
So what time is it on Sunday?
We're, I'm going to go ahead and say four o'clock on Sunday is what we're aiming for, for the community presentation. The big meeting we need the council and planning commission there for is at four o'clock on Monday, the, I should pull, just pull my calendar up, because I'm guessing dates.
The 29th is Monday.
Yes. So Monday, the 29th, and four is the joint meeting. We're trying to pull together with everybody.
The 28th is the final of X Games.
Correct. So we know we're up against that.
It's probably better that-
Oh.
It's the final day of the X Games.
I thought it was over on Sunday afternoon.
I think they do Sunday night, too, but I, I wouldn't be sure.
I thought it was Thursday, Friday, Saturday were the big nights, and then Sunday it's over like midday.
That's how I recollected it, too. I don't know.
You could just go on and look at the schedule.
But that's, that's what we're trying, those are, that gives everybody the time to read it. We're hoping it gets, you know, the electeds and appointed officials time to read it. Think tank, we hope it gives the community time to at least come in, and then that week, those couple of days would be the in-person presentations. It'll still be available online. We'll still be taking comments through Plan Snowmass, and we can hopefully coordinate all those comments after that, and then develop that, what we're calling the hearing draft, the draft that would go through the hearing process with planning commission and town council.
Okay. I think there's a football game starting in about an hour.
There is.
I don't, anything else?
There's a basketball game in an hour as well.
I do want-
Play-in tonight.
My fellow council people, we're working on a draft of a polling tool for RaF- for Rafta, um, looking at sensitivity of a Rafta bond come forward on the twenty-eighteen ballot. It's in, the range of what they're looking at or what we looked at the other day was anywhere from three to five percent. In terms of an increase for Rafta.
Of a sales tax?
No, property tax.
Three to five percent?
Three fi- to five percent, but really the question is, would, would Rafta be successful going into a ballot initiative in twenty-eighteen? So, we'll have a lot more discussions as we move through this process.
I already had somebody talk to me the other day about the increase in their property tax, um, for, you know, twenty-eighteen because a lot of us paid, some were all of our property tax early. So, when we went to the county office the last week of December, they told us what to expect and, um, I think this person was very surprised by the increase. Now, the increase, of course, was best, was more based on the, their assessed value than it was on the mill level because we know the mill level went down a little bit. But, um, you know, if, if assessed values were increased, I guess those who have assessed values increased substantially are gonna find a, a, you know, a more, a greater increase in their taxes. I don't know. I mean, we just, we just, we are now absorbing three different mill levy increases.
Right.
That's a lot. School, fire, water and sand.
Yeah, but school's just the, the same as what the rec and transfer, no, Droste.
Droste, but Droste hasn't gone away yet, has it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's done.
Go away.
This year, isn't it twenty-eighteen?
Yeah, but the, but the school comes...
Twenty-seventeen, I thought it was twenty-se- eighteen.
No, it ends in twenty-seven, it just ended, Droste. I have to look.
I have to look, too, I'd be guessing.
Yeah, actually, I think it ended twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen is the school district that we're gonna start paying them in twenty-eighteen. Those are the same, so...
Yeah, they, they, they cancel.
I would say two.
They cancel them.
You're absorbing two, but that third one is already was, is identi- almost identical.
That's true.
And the two were that we are absorbing, this body has no control over.
Exactly right, but it still goes on your bill.
I get it, I get it, and you will probably take the blame. So, but...
Yes, we're taking the blame for those two, but it is what it is.
Take the blame for a lot of things.
Okay.
So on that note...
Let's go watch football?
Miss Lincoln.
Yeah.
I guess I could mention, you probably all saw what the Attorney General of the United States did.
Yes, I was gonna ask about that, but I thought I, I'd have...
I got an email from the Medical Enforcement Division and they're gonna continue to do what the state says.
Yeah, for a while. It's not over yet. Another thing was announced today is, uh, at, oh, the farmers convention in Tennessee, uh, Trump wants to put broadband throughout all the farming communities, which is not a bad idea. But the question is, who's gonna pay?
Yeah.
It won't be the local, those little local communities, they don't have the money.
Okey-dokey.
Who knows?
Thanks.
It is, does go till Sunday night, they changed the schedule.
It goes to Sunday night?
They changed it. There's a concert at four-thirty and then...